And broadcasting.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining our town hall meeting or webinar this afternoon to help address your questions and concerns about COVID-19 pandemic and how it's affecting our community. One of the things we're feeling strongly about is trying to get some information to our residents in regards to resources for mental health. I'm village president Kevin Wallace and joining me are mental health professionals from Hanover Township. And you hear your name or you can kind of, people might not know your face if they are watching. Tina Hodeck, Director of Hanover Township Youth and Family Services.
Hello, Tina. Thank you.
Trish Abby. Licensed clinical social worker therapist from Hanover Township Department of Aging. Welcome, Trish.
Thank you.
And Amanda Teachout.
Hi.
The Master of Mental Health Manager at Hanover Township. Welcome, Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you all for spending a little bit of time with us today.
Thank you.
So just as a precursor, if you have been on these before, if you have a question while we're on, then you can easily throw it in the chat section. If that doesn't work for you, we'll certainly make the resources available. This whole thing will be available online with all the dialogue back and forth. And also you can stick it in the chatter. There's a raise your hand function on this that you can attempt to use. And we'll try to answer your question while we're going through this. So just to jump right in with some of the questions that we've received. And as we spoke before the call here, I think we'll just have you jump in where if you feel that you have valuable information on any one of these questions. So what mental health resources in general are available to township residents? And just a brief description of how those particular resources might work.
I'll take that one.
Okay.
So I am the Mental Health Board Manager for Hanover Township, which means that I'm in charge of managing all the contracts that we have with mental health agencies in the area. The Mental Health Board has contracts with almost all of the major mental health providers in the area. And that means that we can help provide services, we can help pay for services for residents to attend agencies that they probably would anyway, like Eckers Center or Family Service Association of Greater Elgin or RENS. And all of those agencies serve Hanover Township and beyond. So even if you're in Bartlett but not in Hanover Township, those agencies would serve you. If you live in the township, you might have the added benefit of having the prices of your services greatly reduced.
Thank you, Amanda. Tina or Trish, anything to add to that? Any other resources?
Yes. So as I said, I am the Director of Hanover Township Youth and Family Services. We do provide mental health services. We have five therapists providing that. So for township residents, basically the criteria is that you have to live in the township, have to have a child zero to 19, living in the home. Doesn't necessarily mean that we would just be seeing the child. It could be a parent who's experiencing their own anxiety, depression. We may make the decision that that's the identified client that we would see, couples. So based on what they're bringing to us, we will make that decision. The way to access the services is basically to contact us. I can give you our phone number. It is 630-483-5799. And obviously we are all working remotely right now, but if you contact us, we will be calling you back within seven, eight hours of the day and we will do a confidential intake, gather information, find out what needs you may have. So we're available in that capacity.
Thank you, Tina.
And we also have then with the township, we also have the SeHOP program, which is offering therapy and counseling services to residents over the age of 55 at no cost to them. And so we provide counseling, therapy services through that. We have two therapists that work for us, myself and another therapist, Jenny. We cover four days of the week. And again, we are working remotely, but we can see township residents over the age of 55 who just are have concerns or are wondering how to improve their lives.
Thank you, Trish. I believe that Tina touched on our next question here, but just maybe all you can confirm in your different areas of expertise. For those who have not used mental health resources like this before, I would imagine quite a few out there. Are they confidential?
Yes, all mental health services are confidential. As therapists, we are all required to follow the Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Confidentiality Act of Illinois. So it is all confidential.
Fantastic. Thank you, Tina. Moving on, what can we do primarily to help our older family members that we may be feeling, they may be feeling particularly isolated and vulnerable? Or they possibly could be expressing some anxiety even when we're talking to them. Is there something you could point residents to for that particular situation?
Certainly, I can, I can take this as my expertise as in older adults. I think a couple of things that I've noticed have been helpful is numerous phone calls, but short phone calls. So you know, checking in daily or twice a day, short phone calls. And talking about for family members to talk about themselves versus constantly asking, how are you doing? What are you doing? For family members to reflect what's going on in their lives, to bring those stories together and keep that connection going. And I also think if you can walk an older adult through the idea of setting up a Zoom or setting up Skype, you know, the face-to-face contact as much as it is, is very helpful. But again, phone calls are great. Drive-bys are great, you know, honking in the window. We've all seen the news stories about, you know, talking through the window at a nursing home. And if that nursing home or assisted living allows that, that's a great thing to do. Let's, I think older adults also appreciate mail. So sending cards, sending letters, sending things through the mail can be very important to kind of ease that tension, ease that relief. And just remembering that while we're going through this with our kids and it's hectic, it's stressful for younger families. It's also very stressful and very lonely for our older adults. So we need to keep that contact reliable, keep that contact open and share funny jokes, you know, sending emails, sending mail. All of that is going to be helpful.
Yeah. I would just add, one of the things that we tried to do in my neighborhood here, we obviously, if you've lived in a neighborhood for any extended period of time, you kind of know where the elderly folks are at. And just, just a quick hello if they're outside, how are you doing type of a thing? If there's anything you need, pick up your groceries, anything I can help you with, I'm right down the street. So I think that's important to just to give them a quick hello and hey, you know, whatever you need to have help with, we're certainly here. We aren't really doing a whole lot of other things during the day. Of course, I'm working full-time from my home, but thank you so much for that, Trish.
You're welcome.
Kind of a unique question might be posed here. How can I deal with guilt from being physically separated from family members that I would normally be actually their caregiver? Anybody have any ideas around that? So normally that person would be their caregiver and watching after them, maybe seeing them on a regular basis and they can't right now.
This is a really hard thing for adult caregivers of their older adult family members. And I think one thing is to ease that guilt is to know that by not being near them, we actually are keeping them safer. And that's really important to remember that where that this is for the greater good. Where by not being there, we're keeping them safer. But also I think you can be a caregiver in different ways. You, you used to bring over groceries, you can still bring over groceries and drop them off. You used to visit with them daily. You can still do that by phone. So making sure that you're still keeping up those kinds of activities, just finding new ways to do that is important. I also think making sure that if somebody needs physical care, caregiving services are still operating. So if you need to hire somebody to come into the home to provide that care, caregiving services are still operating and they're very good at keeping people safe through, you know, their preventative equipment and the way that they approach sanitizing their equipment and all of that. So it's, it's good to remember that we, you can hire somebody to come into the home if you need to.
That's really good to know. Anything else, Amanda and Tina on that topic?
I would just say that, you know, everybody deals with stress and guilt in their own way. And so just making sure that you're aware of that and also having the ability to communicate with others. You know, it's okay to call your friends and say, I'm really struggling with this right now because it's something that they've been doing, you know, for a very long time. And so communicating that with friends and having that support system in place.
Good, good.
I was gonna say too, I think the idea of, of understanding that in this situation, not everyone can do everything perfectly. And, and we're all very good at telling other people, you're doing the best you can, but we're not always good at telling ourselves that. And so kind of keeping in mind to take our own advice to other people too.
Excellent point, Amanda. Thank you. So how do I help my kids with their sense of fear or disappointment with all the disruption in their lives? Obviously now we just heard the governor announce that schools will be closed the rest of the year, especially teens, there's probably some anger going on. Obviously some disappointment, some huge disappointment. We can all remember back when we were looking forward to graduation and prom and all of those things. And that's just got to be a really, really trying thing for these students. So how do I help my kids as a parent with their sense of fear, disappointment with all of this disruption in their lives? And how do I help the teenage kids as well?
So since you brought up about seniors, I can start a little bit with that. Some of this will go with both, you know, younger children and teens. But you know, obviously, you know, seniors missing out on these major rites of passage is frustrating, is sad for them. It's difficult for them. And so as a parent, I would encourage parents to be very empathetic with their kids, letting them know that it's okay to be sad, angry, frustrated, disappointed. It's okay to say that you're sorry that they're going through this, that this, you know, sucks, that unfortunately we're all going through that, but it doesn't make it feel any better for them that they're still feeling miserable about it. But you know, that it's okay that they're experiencing this. It's pretty normal having to do that. I would also encourage parents of seniors, you know, a lot of the local school districts are looking at potentially, if possible, having these events, prom, graduation, mid to late summer. So I would encourage parents to know about what's going on within their school districts and being able to share the updates with their teenagers. So that though is important. In terms of fear and frustration for kids, teenagers, what I would tell parents first of all is to check themselves. Anxiety and fear is contagious. Kids will feed off of you. So I would try to do your best to control your own anxiety. Make sure, you know, what I'm hearing a lot is people are becoming obsessed with what's going on. And so they've got the TV on all the time. So I would really encourage parents to limit that. Have accurate information, check their own anxiety so that the kids aren't feeding off of you. That would be the first thing that I would do. I would also find out, you know, what your children know about what's going on. And once you know as a parent, then you can help fill in the gaps. Again, making sure that you have, you know, accurate information. You should always validate your feelings and let them know, validate their feelings and let them know that you're taking their feelings and fears and concerns and anxiety, you're taking them seriously. Open communication with them. Let them know that their fears are something that everyone is currently experiencing, including yourself as a parent. Also work with them on what they have control over, helping them identify those things that they can have control over. I mean, making decisions with them, having them have, empowering them, having to say, I'd rather do my social or my distance learning in the afternoon instead of the morning. Lighten up on some of those things. Kids are not going to remember the education piece of this. What they will remember is their anxiety. It's better to make sure that, that their mental health is where it needs to be as opposed to developmentally or educationally where they need to be. So making sure that that happens. Just communication and then watching their behaviors. If teenagers are, you know, obviously teenagers like to socialize more, they're very independent. Some of them tend to isolate. I would encourage parents for teenagers to make sure that they have every way that they can contact with their peers and use social media, Facebook, FaceTime, whatever, Snapchat, have chats as much as possible. This is not a time to limit their online activity. I would encourage that. And as Trish was saying, for the senior population, the same thing with teens and youth. There are ways to be able to still be involved with your peers. You know, there are people in cul-de-sacs around my neighborhood, the teens are out there, they're wearing masks, but they're six feet apart. Parents are watching, making sure that they're staying six weeks apart, but they're communicating and they're having a good time. Obviously if kids' behaviors, if you're concerned about them isolating more than normal, crying, disruptive sleep, you know, a lot more negative behavior, those are the times that you should reach out to a mental health provider.
Thank you, Tina. Very, very well said. Anyone have anything to add to that?
I think I would say for younger children, one of the things that's really nice about school is that it creates a consistent schedule for them and so they know what to expect. And that's really hard to do at home. And so I think as much as you can kind of have something consistent, get up at the same time every day, kind of have the same morning routine, the same general routine. That is very helpful to smaller children and they kind of thrive in that environment. That doesn't mean you can't, you know, kind of throw, throw routine out the window for a moment or two. It's okay to have, you know, one night of ice cream sundaes for dinner is not going to hurt anybody and it's probably going to make things a lot more memorable.
I'm up for that. I'll go with that one.
So I, things like that are fun to do and it's, it's helpful for smaller children because it's engaging them in a positive way, but they're still kind of having some kind of routine that helps them know what to expect every day.
Good, good. Great point. Fantastic.
The other, I'm sorry. The other thing I'd like to add is that, you know, everybody is kind of having their own struggles with all of this. But this is also an opportunity to make this adventurous and be creative and do the things that they couldn't do in the past. You know, you know, we have lots of working parents and then the kids are involved in lots of activities. There isn't downtime. This is the time that there is going to be downtime and make it adventurous. You know, have playing games one night, doing the things that you typically would not be doing when things were normal.
Yeah.
I would also say this is with the downtime, this is a great time for kids to engage with their older family members. So tying back older adults into it, this is a great time. Kids are busy and so it's connecting with grandparents has always been difficult. You know, and when my kid plays three sports and, and I know we're running around all the time and don't always call grandma as much as we want, but now this is a great time. My, just for example, my mother and my daughter are painting by number together. You know, they get on Zoom or whatever and do that activity together. This is a great time to engage both the younger children and our older adults who are isolated in ways that we hadn't thought of before.
Fantastic ideas. I know I heard some information about how really important it is to try to either stay on your old routine or get into a routine, even if it's a modified one, just something that you can look forward to every day and that you're doing every day. So fantastic comments. Thank you, ladies. Are there some quick ways to de-stress when I'm feeling overwhelmed? Anybody have any pointers on that? I could help, I could use some help with that. Definitely.
So yes, there's lots of things that somebody can do. Deep breathing is, you know, what, something that we're always telling our families to do. Take a walk, enjoy nature, spend 15 minutes. If you're feeling like you're getting frustrated, just walk away. Find something that you may have enjoyed in the past and just because life happens, you haven't had the opportunity to do and start doing that again. Listen to music. Exercise, exercise as a family. Those are the things that we're telling some of our clients, you know, make time to exercise as a family. And it's always important, if you're feeling frustrated, find some alone time, even if it's five, 10 minutes for you to just kind of go away, decompress, relax, rejuvenate, meditate, whatever you need to do. It's important to also be able, be able to take care of yourself so that you can take care of the rest of the family.
Thank you, Tina.
There are also a lot of meditations on, say YouTube. I mean, there's lots of meditation apps, but without purchasing something, you just go on YouTube and search guided meditation. There's plenty of guided meditations for stress relief. You can kind of try them out because there's different voices, different sounds to see which one you like. But that can be really helpful to get a five-minute break and just really de-stress your body.
Fantastic. Good information. Yeah. When you talk about taking a walk, I know my family and I did. I have two college-age kids that are home. One of them's back in Michigan now, not going to school, but has a cottage, his apartment there. But he was taking walks almost every morning and notified me that the forest reserve, almost every day was walking over there in the morning. There were deer in there. I never would have known. So now I'm going to start taking walks over there in the morning. So can, we do have a question that came in in a chat. So let me read that. It's, this question comes in and asks, it seems like some of my older friends are still going out every day, doing a little shopping to combat loneliness. What do you say to them? What would you say to that idea?
It's, it's, it's a dilemma that I know a lot of people are having. It's a dilemma that I certainly faced with my aging parents as well of, you know, trying to get them to take this seriously. There's a balance in everything, you know, older adults are going to make the decisions that they're going to make. And as long as, you know, they are, are thinking those through, we have to kind of allow that to happen. But also I think just warning them that you want them around for a long time and, and that safety measures in place are there because we know that the science is there for that. I think finding other ways to beat that loneliness, like we talked about daily phone calls, letters, doing activities together over the phone or over Skype, those kinds of things to combat that loneliness. So they're not seeking out the person at the grocery store as, as their confidant. But you know, honestly, if you're alone in your house for, for time after time after time, it is a battle to fight to not, not see people. And so we need to kind of help that through. If we can help them to feel less lonely, then maybe we can ease that going out all the time. But sometimes, you know, sometimes they make their own decisions and you have to, we have to support them in that as well.
Thank you, Trish.
My mother is, she's 75 and she's very lonely. And so I was just talking to her today and she told me that she got in her car and drove over to her friend's house and called her friend from in the driveway. And her friend came out onto the porch and they had a conversation from the phone in, my mom was in the car and her friend was on the porch. And she said that she's going to do that once a week because it's really helping her and it's better than going out to the grocery store. You know, it's one of those things where she still gets to see the person and have a very close conversation. It's a good time. So I think being creative to kind of combat that loneliness is important too. And if you have that kind of mobility to be able to do something like that or, you know, sit in the cul-de-sac like Tina was describing with the teenagers, that's okay for seniors to do if they can. And so just being creative with how, how to do that, but keep your distance.
Yeah, we have a, we have a senior friend, dear friend of ours in Crystal Lake. And I know tomorrow we, my wife set up a meet, a meeting in a park, just that, you know, distancing, probably staying in our cars or maybe at the opposite picnic tables. But we're going to bring a pizza up and put it in the middle and, and maybe share some food together and just kind of communicate with her that way because she has been in, in her house. She says she takes a drive every day, but still is really, really kind of lonely. So we're going to do. Check here to see if there's any other chat questions. Thank you for that one. Okay. Can you share any telephone help lines? I know that Tina had mentioned one number that people can call. Can you share any telephone help, help lines that are available to people who are feeling overwhelmed or distressed? So.
Yeah.
Phone numbers and ways that they can call in and get some help.
So I have two. One is the Call for Calm number. And that is set up by the Department of Public Health in Illinois. They've set up a mental health line and they're working with different agencies all over the state. So Eckers Center for Mental Health is a local agency and they're working with the Call for Calm. So what you do is you text the word TALK to 552020, so 552020. And you'll get an immediate text back, I tested this, with more information. So it'll ask you a yes or no question. It'll ask you if you're feeling like this is an emergency or crisis and who to contact. And then a therapist will call you within 24 hours, which is a really handy little tool. And so that's a nice one. The other one that I have is through AID, which is a local agency. They service kind of St. Charles, Aurora, South Elgin and a little bit of Elgin. They have a line that's 24/7 right now and the number is 630-966-9393. And if you call that, you'll get ahold of a licensed counselor to speak with.
Okay, 630-966-9393. I can tell you, one of the things that came up, I have a men's group every Friday morning at, at 7:00 AM and we zoom it now. Obviously we used to meet directly for the last 10 years. But one of the gentleman there is mid-70s and he doesn't text, neither do my, my in-laws don't text. They don't even have the text function on, on their phone. So I know that the governor and the state and everybody are suggesting folks text these things into different, text names into different numbers. But those, it's important to have an alternative way to contact those particular resources. And I just saw today some scams that are coming out, obviously. And most vulnerable will be those that are receiving texts that don't normally receive texts because they're going to send them to a regular phone number. And one of them says, you're being notified because you came in contact with a COVID-19 patient. Please click on this link and it's a text. So don't ever, ever, for all of those people that are listening or watching, ever click on any link. You get the, any, any source of government, municipal, county, state or federal will never text you anything like that.
That goes for the stimulus payment too. Nobody's going to text you or call you about the stimulus payment either. So I know that that is a red flag for that, that older adults are being scammed on. You know, click here to access your stimulus payments and that's obviously not valid either.
Yeah. So those direct phone numbers are important. Go ahead, Tina.
I also have a local agency, the Crisis Center in Elgin. They're, they have a crisis line that's available 24/7 as well. And it's fully staffed. The phone number there is 847-697-2380. And then obviously for those.
Can you go ahead and repeat that? Okay.
And then obviously for those that are really having difficulty with all this and are having some suicidal tendencies, there's the suicide hotline, which is 1-800-273-8255.
Okay. Let's go ahead and repeat that number again, please, Tina.
Sure. 1-800-273-8255.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So just in a broad brush here to round things up, are there any other mental health issues or concerns that you have been hearing from the Bartlett community or any other community during this critical time that we haven't really touched on yet?
I, I think it's important to just mention that families who are already coping with mental health issues, mental illness in their homes, that this situation could be exacerbating that. You know, not everybody's getting out for groups or support groups or mental health services. You know, we're doing telephonic services, but it's different. And so I also had one more phone number, which is NAMI, which is a supportive organization for people who have family members who are suffering from mental illness. And their number is 800-950-6264. Again, 800-950-6264. And that's for family members who are helping someone cope with. And that's for family members who are helping someone cope with the a mental illness.
Thank you, Trish.
So not necessarily in the Bartlett area that I'm aware of, but I believe this is across the board. One of the concerns is the unreported domestic violence situation. Domestic violence shelters are not getting calls as frequently as they were in the past. I think those that are involved in a domestic violence situation may be afraid that they there isn't going to be space for them because of this, you know, social distancing and remote work. So there that's a concern and also increase in substance use and alcoholism. It's those calls, even within the police department, they are lower than typical. And so I know that as we're trying to do phone therapy, we're trying to do our best as therapists to assess those situations, but we have to be very careful in how we do that.
Yeah, that's great information.
Actually, to piggyback on what Tina said, I do know that RENS, which is a substance abuse treatment center in the area, is accepting new patients and new clients. And they are also doing remote therapy with clients. And so if you need to access any kind of substance abuse services, their phone number is eight four seven seven four two three five four five. I'll say it again. It's eight four seven seven four two three five four five.
Fantastic. That's great information, great resources for folks or residents. So that if there's nothing else that anyone thinks we kind of left out or has any other comments, we will make it a wrap. Anything else, ladies? I really thank you for joining us today during this town hall webinar. It's such a great honor to have professionals on the line to to help residents and and just directly. I think I think it's very important that people do see a face, that if they can dial up and actually see a face and it's a little more comforting than just calling a number. So thank you for joining us. On behalf of the Village Board of Trustees, I certainly have to thank the township mental health professionals and all of your staff. It's a hard time for you folks and your hard work and flexibility as you continue to provide these essential services and keep our community safe during these unprecedented times. And I just wish you luck and best of luck with with everything that's going on right now. And for those out in the audience or that watch this after the fact, you've got some great phone numbers. You can certainly reach out to the village to contact us to be able to get the link to this information. But I just wish everybody the best and we'll get through this, hopefully sooner rather than later. But thank you all for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.